I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Monty knows Dustin.
He'll be a little late because he's kind of tired.
Oh, that's right. Do you have a drill list on purpose?
Sure.
For all our police father heads.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together this evening to take a look at and address the needs of our fine city. Pray that you watch over those activities, that they may be pleasing to you and pleasing to our citizens. We thank and praise you for all the great things you do for us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Right, Stan. Okay. Reading and approving minutes from May twentieth, please. Move to. Move to approve. Proven, and I guess. And I guess let's suspend.
Motion.
Motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by pillar discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Approval of the agenda. So move. Motion by Stern.
And second.
Second by pillar discussion. Only I want to discuss about the agenda is I think I want to. Dustin is going to be here for maybe. Seven, eight minutes. So I'd like to wait for the engineers' report. And improvement discussion until he's here, so we have another person. If you guys don't mind, then we can do some. We can look for reports or other before that. Jared, I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah, I have an awesome.
Okay. All right, we got motion and second, approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, I guess we can do the, probably do the engineers' report if we want, but we should wait on B then for. Jared, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, all right. All right, so I'll just go through the report that's on the screen here. Generally Expedition Estates, they started construction up there. You guys have paid attention, I don't know, but right now they're, they've got the block of deep sanitary sewer to do, just coming out onto eleven. The contractor's subcutting a lot of that material. It's about twenty feet deep, so right now he's moving about five feet of dirt from the hole in the right of way, moving it, putting it back on site so they can actually do the pipe insulation replacement work. John will be here. So today they're, they're kind of moving dirt, but John will be here tomorrow to watch that piping work. No real update on kind of the remaining portion of the work. And as soon as I have schedules for things, I'll be sure and share them with you guys. As you know, there, you're. It's private work being done. You're, you're, it's not a contract with you guys, but you're still planning to take up, take over the ownership when it's done, so you have best interest in monitoring it. So we'll keep track of it. Alley improvements, again, that was awarded to Winkler Construction. They expect to start the weekend after the Fourth of July. That'll have some impact on some of the businesses on that block. We're talking about having a pre-con meeting, probably a little closer to that time. Pre-con meetings go through scope, schedule, timing, shutdowns, general stuff, but we'll probably invite the business owners to that because we'll try to put six business owners on that street. Next thing I have is city water meter replacement. Dude did have the pre-con on that. No real. No real changes unless you've been contacted, but no, okay. At some point, they're going to be asking for names and records and addresses and other information. I think they have had Jared running around a little bit doing new things, visits and things, but for the most part, they're kind of just getting ready to get ready, I think. Lift station stuff, again, I don't have a time of that, but that'll be one day, you know, a couple of day projects where they'll come and put those different components in those panels. It shouldn't function during that time. We shouldn't see any shutdowns or we shouldn't have any water restrictions or anything like that. I'm going to skip over the sanitary sewer one here. But as far as asphalt work goes, the last meeting I was here, we awarded some asphalt work to quality asphalt. When Expedition Estates is ready for pavement, they'll be coming, and that's when they'll do that work. Probably have a couple of days worth of notice to let you know, but it's generally just spot repairs throughout town. No real pre-con meeting, no traffic control, no, no big things like that. We have, we are still waiting on a quote for some concrete work, too. So at the same time, you guys had us get quotes from Winkler, because they're doing the alley paving behind that block. There'll be some spot repairs, some sidewalks and curbs and different things like that that. You guys can consider those quotes when you get them. I think he was here on Friday, I think. Went and looked at some of the spots.
Yeah, when I go around a little bit.
Okay, so we gave him a plan with the spots, so they went and looked at them. Expect to get that quote, you know, hopefully in a week or two, so we can consider that at the, at the next meeting. Yeah, generally, we're busy right now with a lot of construction projects going on. There's. I don't know. It, it's difficult. There's, there's fewer contractors doing work. There's a lot of work out there. I think they try to be as efficient as they can when they try to get to some places to do work. So we're, we're, we're struggling with some completion dates on some projects. Projects are behind, but it's part of the, part of the gig right now. Once we can get people here, you know, we can try and plan ahead of time, reduce change orders, you know, have. Try not to add stuff on at the last minute. So these concrete guys, the asphalt guys, if there's extra stuff to do, like if we had a water main break or we have more things, I got to know about them ahead of time so we can bring enough material and not, you know, remold and all that kind of stuff. So just keep me in the loop if you want to add stuff, you know, to these contracts. So anyways, I have stuff on the sewer project, but do you want me to just wait?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Question back on the Expedition Estates. Dave, did you want to just mention the dust control up there?
Yeah, we were visiting.
Okay.
Yeah, we were visiting, and we're going to go look at that after.
I'd just like it in the records so that citizens out there know that it's being discussed and that it's hopefully being addressed.
So dust control is part of their stormwater permit. They have a. The developer up there has a stormwater permit for the whole area. So any erosion or dust or whatever falling within, so, or the site is their responsibility. So there is dust. We can have them spray water on things. You know, I, from what I noticed, it was like the concrete trucks coming and going bass through there that was generating the most dust. Maybe a little bit from excavators, too, but still, yes, that's, I think we should, we should have them do that. Right, we just, we just want to make sure people with, with some teeth or authority are addressing that with the contractors up there, so. I took a couple of videos up there when I was there before. Thank you, that was the same thing. I'll hold you around.
Dave, we got, showed you that, the road, too?
Yes, yeah, I'm going to go look at that road and the quality of it.
Okay.
Yeah, so they should generally be staying off your roads, but if there's some restrictions and sometimes you can't help it, then we just, if they're using some roads outside the site, then we'll do a whole road inspection now and video it. So if there's any damage down the wall, make sure they repair it.
Good.
So why don't you talk to you all about the gaps and stuff on the guide kit, or have you had a chance to visit it all a little bit?
We did visit it a little bit. I need to get all the way over there to take a look at it to see if there's something we can do pretty easily. It's a big box culvert across the levee, and there's some flared end sections on the end. And the one thing that, the one flare had slipped, and there's only about that much gap in it. And it's important to get that fixed quick because if we get sediment and dirt in there, they won't be able to pull it back together. But they may be able to squeeze it back together. Then we get some internal tie bars. There's, there's actually holes in both sides that can be put together, lasted together, so it can't leak in. So cross our fingers if they can squeeze it together, it might not be a big deal. But I didn't notice any erosion or anything bad. It might just be a simple thing. And it doesn't have to be done tomorrow, but I think it's, it's good that you guys caught it.
Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move down to. Reports on water sewer.
I think most of the stuff regarding water and sewer will be addressed when we, when we talk public projects and stuff. So I'll just.
Dave, anything else on streets?
No, we're just busy mowing, we have street sweepers around, we have command power, the storm drain's open. With all the rain, we'll get a lot of debris washing over, flooding, and so on. We're maintaining all of that.
Okay. Have you guys done any tree trimming or tree work at all yet?
Yeah, we got one long the other day. The panel that had to go down or whatever, I'm getting addresses together. I'm trying to get some stump grinding done. Some debris with that last year. I got paint and stuff ordered for some striping and a bunch of painting and stuff for the summer, so that's on order.
Thank you. Casey? Who have anything at this time? Jim, anything to report for us?
Tony talked to the rep. Six twenty-four, they're going to start going through the vehicle and prepping it to be outfitted. And they hope it's ready to go on the fifteenth of July.
Well, I'm glad we finally got ahold of somebody. I said I'm glad we finally got ahold of somebody.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good news. All right, let's, let's. Oh, yeah, Buster?
Take a pass today.
You will. All right. All right, let's move down to new business. Bid opening for propane.
We received two bids for propane delivery for coming year. First one was from Palmer Union Oil, Senex. Submit the following bid for your consideration. Propane at one dollar thirty-three cents per gallon from June first, twenty twenty-four to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. On a keep full basis. The other bid is from Fidler Oil. Delivery of propane fuel for June first, twenty twenty-four to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. One dollar thirty-eight cents per gallon.
All right, thank you.
Make a motion to accept the bid from Palmer Union Senex at one thirty-three a gallon for the duration of time between June first and May thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. June first of twenty twenty-four presumed, is that right?
June first, twenty-four to May thirty-first, twenty-five.
Yep.
Motion by pillar.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Pillar, aye. Stern, aye. Over and out.
Aye, motion carried. All right, twelve B, twenty twenty-five busing grant.
Just if I could back up for a second, I didn't receive any bids for this application spring as of the time of this meeting.
Okay.
Did we have any bids last year? We did spruce it up along a tree from you who had gotten the bid last year. So with no bids, do we have capability of doing some of those particular projects internal?
Yeah, possibly, yes.
I'm just asking the question to understand if we need to take a next step and reach beyond. I don't know how far our tentacles went out in pursuing bids for this.
Well, we published the notice. Specifically, Mr. Valinsky had contacted me to see when we were doing it other than that.
Okay. I'm not sure now that we've published, can we just contract with somebody if we want for small?
Yeah.
Yep. So we've done the due diligence, now it kind of opens up the gateway for us?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
We're seeing a lot more of that, more and more, we're tired of chasing the bids.
Mm-hmm.
And just like, come get us after the fact.
Interesting.
At least with some of the smaller communities that it represents, Halliday Dodge.
Okay, back to twelve B. Busing grant. Marty?
Basically, this is an annual process for the federal and state transit grants. So that a bit of assurances that will follow the lobbying restrictions by American, all of those types of things. It'll go to the city's attorney for review and approval. They have a section to sign off on as well. But in order to receive the funding, we have to do these certs and assurances. Grants are awarded usually the first part of July.
Motion to approve the process of completing this documentation.
Here we have a motion by pillar. Second. Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Pillar, aye. Stern, aye. Weider, aye. Over and out.
Aye, motion carried. Okay. That takes us back to the statistics here.
The gears report, and then we can go back.
Yeah. Yeah, let's start with your report first, and then we'll go back to.
All right.
And Officer Wolf did talk about the vehicle.
Okay, let's see the cover of the vehicle. So all I got then is the runway porch for. This will be for May. Officer Byers at thirty-four. Officer Anthony Malberg at forty-three. Officer Samantha Malberg at fifty-eight, and Chief Wolf at forty.
Any questions for Dustin? All right. Okay, back up to five. Five B. Improvement project district, Senator Sewer Resolution.
Yeah. Okay, so if you guys recall, the last meeting I was here, we talked through the engineers' report, where there was some discussion on the district boundary, like where the improvements would pertake. You know, it's, it's, it's clay tile sewer mains in the old part of town. If you guys look at the very back page or engineers' report, it shows that improving them, so lining about twenty-five thousand feet of sewer mains. Spot, what is it? Twenty spot repairs, twenty sanitary sewer invert, or manhole invert replacements, and four hundred millimeter foot of manhole rehabilitation. It's all about, you know, two point six five million dollars. That's what the engineers' report said, what you have for needs as far as the, this part of the community. We talked a little bit about costs and how a lot of towns do it, which is through EDUs, which is charging people that are using the sanitary sewer system. And we, we kind of talked through it, and you guys wanted to see these resolutions at this next meeting, which is the beginning steps of a special, special improvement district type of project. So in the back, you've kind of got some of the, the initial kickoff steps, which is to create the improvement district, direct the engineer, per the engineers' report. And so Monty's got the resolutions here. Generally, what the creating improvement district does though is it sets the boundary. So there's the map on the following page that just basically shows exactly what town was on the map before. It's the, the area that benefits, there you go, Monty's tracing it to the outline. That would, that's generally what is, you know, thought to be the benefiting area from, from a rehab type of project. So the type of work we're talking about is, is trenchless work for the most part, other than digging up and fixing some of the broken sewer mains. You guys, we walked through some of the photos of the problems. There's all kinds of number of, of issues in those dozen spots. But generally, the rehab work is installing a liner inside the clay tile sewer main to seal it up from a new pipe that set the old one. And then the manholes, same thing, there's no digging. They'll rehab those manholes, I mean, inside, much like Key Contract has been doing for you guys. The doing sewer improvements like this is just generally way more efficient to bite off fewer larger projects than to do two or three manhole rehabs at a time. So when I look at this, you got about twenty, twenty inverts to do and about fifty manhole walls to do. Be more efficient. That's just the economy of scale on these projects. So what we've got is the resolutions. The first one is creating the improvement district. The second one is the engineers' report. Engineers' report basically just explains what, what I did. It's the scope of the work and it's the cost of the work. It's the cost of the work, is what we're saying, is two point six five million dollars. And then the next resolution is to approve the engineers' report, direct the engineer to prepare plans and specs. So Monty's got them here, and they're all included in your packet. But there's three of them to make.
So the first one would be the resolution, creating and defining borders, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's where we need to start. We need a motion to start with that. So move. Motion by Weider.
Second.
Second by pillar. Discussion. Roll call.
Weider, aye. Pillar, aye. Stern, aye. Over and out.
Aye. Motion carried.
Like I said, the next part is to, is the engineers' report. And the reason the engineers' report is important is because once that dollar amount is set, if your bids come in a certain amount over that amount, you can't legally award the construction contract. You have to kind of throw them out and rebid it. So two point six five million dollars is kind of a, it's drawing a line at. You can't go over that, I don't know what the threshold is.
It's, it's got to be twenty percent.
Okay. Whatever. So it's important that that, that there's thought put into this and that the public's aware of what they should expect.
Okay. This is the resolution approving engineers' report and directing preparation of detailed plans and specifications.
This is the, this is actually the, for the engineers' report preparation, which was, was kind of out of order because they did already do that so that we had an idea of where we were at on the project.
And we do this all the time, right? It's just not official, because, yeah.
So I'll officially make a motion.
Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Weider, discussion. Roll call.
Pillar, aye. Weider, aye. Stern, aye. Over and out.
Aye. Motion carried.
Okay, the next, what's the next one, Monty?
Then you finally get to the approving engineers' report and directing preparation of detailed plans and specs.
Okay, and I think, I'll take some time on this one here, too. I want to walk you guys through. So when you. At this point, you know, you're approving the, the cost estimate and then directing us for repair plans. We've included a task order in the packet for this stuff. If you go to that back page of the packet, two point six five million dollars we expected this project to cost. When we were kind of starting, I was just using thirty-five percent for engineering legal contingencies bonding. Now I don't think it's going to be that much. It's kind of a catch-all number when you start off on these things, just to kind of throw some conservativeness to it. Look at the back page here. What I expect the design and bidding engineering to cost is a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. That's what this task order is for. That's about, it's a little under seven percent of the construction cost. What we do on these projects is we put together, it's called work breakdown structure. We look at the scope of the work, we look at the funding requirements, environmental report, plans, bidding, build Ameri, build back America better requirements that are out there for these federal jobs. And that's the, that's the effort that it's going to take to do the plans and specs. And so an engineering contract is three parts. It's scope, schedule, and budget. And so the scope of the work will be, was defined within the cost estimate. The time, or the, the cost is that, and then the time is, we're expecting about ninety days to design this. What that would do is that would put us at the September meeting to approve plans and specs. We would then open bids at the end of September or contract in October, so that we still have November and parts of December to do those sanitary sewer spot repairs if the contractor wants to do it. We talked about this before. There's some pros and cons from doing it this year. Con is that it would be a mess in those spots, but the pros, then pull out the ground, peel itself, throw some brief stock cycles and get that settlement out of it. So I'm not saying the contractor will want to do that, but if we get good bids and they do want to, I think we should strongly consider it. But that's the, that's the schedule that we've laid out here, I think, to get this designed and bid late summer. Okay, any questions?
No.
So with Dodge, one of the things that was kind of a stumbling block for us was we had to renew our contract with Southwest Water for the duration of loan. Are we looking at this and have we done that yet? Does anybody know? It was just, it caused us about a five-week delay with Dodge's city project.
One of the projects?
Yeah.
But this is, this is all sanitary sewer, so that wouldn't really apply to.
I wouldn't think so either, but they granted Dodges with both freshwater and sewer. And just don't want to run into.
So when we do water, right, when we do water projects, the water only, USDA or SRF or whatever will specifically want a copy of the water for screening, and they'll want to make sure that it's updated and that it's current. And that is, that's, that's always an extra checkbox on water projects.
Okay, I just didn't want that to slip under the radar without asking.
Good question, Monty.
Absolutely.
Okay. There's no questions for Jared, then we need a motion to approve that. Resolution approving the engineers' report, requiring the detailed plans. Motion by Weider.
Second.
Second by pillar, discussion. So then if we don't, I guess, do the project, even if the bids are too high and stuff, then we still then?
I would still ask you to pay that.
Still pay that?
Yeah, it's, it's our.
Work you're doing.
You're, yeah, you're, you're advancing it, and yeah, it's a good question. It's, it's important to bring that up. We have had projects come in high, we have had to revise and rebid. Sometimes, you know, we'll be bidding this late September. If we don't get good bids, what we probably end up doing is rebidding it again in January, February. It's, I wouldn't say it's the, if we're bidding something in the summertime, you know, like in July, it's kind of a poor time to bid something unless you have a contractor that's just hungry. Bidding something in late September, same thing. We either get somebody that needs work that tall, or everybody will be too busy and not get a chance to look at it. If we get high bids, we'll be rejecting the bidding. So I, I don't have a crystal ball. Like, there's been times I've been shocked that we've gotten good bids and shocked that we've gotten bad bids. All I'll say is that right now is not a good time to bid something, you know, first of June. That's just, nobody knows what their schedule's going to be. But yes, you're, you're advancing it, so the expectation is that you're going to fix sewer. Any more questions?
Is there any, we, we talked about the possibility of accomplishing some of the spot work and stuff prior to the end of this calendar year with this whole idea that you're, you're throwing out there related to the hunger of the contractors and the, and the bids coming in either high or low or whatever. Is there, is there any value for us delaying going out for bid until? Is there, is there any value for us delaying going out for bid until closer to the end of the calendar year? Or go any thoughts of trying to accomplish something this fall in, in light of getting a more respectful bid?
I, I just don't, I can't say.
Going back to polishing up your crystal ball. Just, you know, based on, based on historical, you know, projects you've done in other, other towns and stuff.
The nice thing is they've given them an option on, you know, for the fall or.
There's still some details. So, so that may be something of, of merit, you know, to those that are bidding that they got some stuff to maybe wrap up the calendar year, some little spot projects and stuff. So that may be an attraction.
That's exactly what I'm thinking.
Okay.
Usually the month of November is weird here because it's, it's still nice enough to work, but it's too late to pave. So if a contractor opens bid in September and they've got October and November to go and do these ten spot repairs, we might just find somebody who wants to do it. And it'll just have a rail surface for the lecture, which again, it's not the best, but it's just that underground guys usually have to stop like the twentieth of October to allow that last two weeks for paving. And some of them are just, they have nothing to do.
Yeah.
Right, so I, I, it's very possible that we gets, and we've got some details to iron out, like we gotta, when, when you guys are approving plans, we're gonna set some completion dates. We gotta decide if we're gonna have one contract or two contracts. There's, there's merits in doing both, but that's, those are details you guys can figure out, you know, when we get closer. But, yeah.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion, we have a second, we were discussion. Roll call.
Weider, aye.
Pillar, aye. Stern. So, Omen Hour.
Aye, motion carried.
So I already went through the other engineer and report items. Um, like I said, we'll be bringing back some concrete bids. I'll probably have to call them to that meeting in two weeks if I have those bids, but I guess we decide at that point if we're gonna do some of that work or all of that work from here. Yeah.
Sounds good.
Thank you guys, thank you, yep.
Didn't really address the task order.
The task order.
In a way you didn't, you didn't address it directly as to if you were approving the task order or not.
So you directed the engineer and prepared plans, no contract?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Get separate then.
So you want.
It was a separate motion to approve task order number twenty-three.
That's your motion?
I was asking a question, that is correct, then I'll make that motion to approve it.
Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Weider. Discussion.
So the previous motion just wasn't detailed enough. I thought we were kind of addressing this particular facet, we just didn't call it task order number three. You didn't include the task order with the resolution directing that down. Plans, yeah. Semantics.
Aye. Your auditor.
Yep, yep.
You have a motion and a second, discussion. Roll call.
Pillar, aye.
Weider, aye. Stern.
No.
Omen Hour.
Aye, motion carried. Thanks, Monty, thanks, Jared.
Thank you.
Alright, so we got those done, down to thirteen, correct? Public comment, you here for a public comment?
I am.
Go ahead, Jared.
It's kind of a question also. Um, my sister owns a corner lot that is rented out that had a fire, I think it was the sixth. Oh, it was about the sixth, anyway. Um, I wasn't even notified of it by the, the renter. And I just happened to go around the block, cause I had to go back up to center, or up to center, up to Senex. And in the process, my eyes just coughed because there was this fire there. So I called Cory Berry and I've spoken to Mr. Wolf. Mr. Wolf was kind enough to give me an incident report that I have for the insurance. And I, uh, Mr. Berry didn't give me anything and I had asked for something, I've called several times. I did let him know that tomorrow, a lady from Iowa is coming up here because the insurance company needs a report in order for them to give, you know, care to the renters needs and stuff. So, um, how do I go about getting him to respond to me so I have an incident report from him as to what happened?
So we can give you our run rate report, I'm actually on the fire department too. And that's all we have is what we did.
Okay, but I have nothing.
It doesn't state what caused the fire, none of that, what the possibilities are, we're not fire inspectors.
But I got nothing, that's what I'm asking.
If that's what you want, I can try to find that for you and get it to you.
I would appreciate.
How am I gonna help you at all to be honest with you?
I'm, I'm trying to do this for somebody that isn't living in the state and, and this is just hearsay now. So I would, I would, I would appreciate that or help.
Yeah, we, we can get that, if you wanna get Monty your email address or I can email it to you, Monty, and he can get it to you.
Okay, that would be great, that would be great, so, thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other public comments? I know we have a pending one, but it's, no, no, it is here. Approve the bills. We need to approve the, motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by Pillar. Discussion. Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar, aye. Weider, aye. Omen Hour.
Aye, motion carried. Me, Dave, Jerry. Thank you all, thanks, Jim.